If I can call this meeting to order. First order of business, plectal egis.
Plectal egis, to the right of the United States of America. And to the Republic of America, our nation, under God, native citizen, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a mic system, so hopefully everybody can hear better than what we've had in the past. So first, the first order of business is approved tonight's agenda.
Motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Oh, second.
We have a motion and a second on favor.
Aye.
Both so carry. Next order of business is Stacy Alliance with the CM River. Do you want to take the floor, please?
Sure. Do you want me to sit here? Okay. Well, thank you first. I want to say thank you for having me here today. Cheryl's been great to work with to get this set up. Mayor Wagner, I want to first tell you a little bit about myself because most of you are probably familiar with Larry Lloyd, who was the government or is the government and public affairs manager for the US. Larry is actually currently serving our country in the Army Reserves and he's been deployed for a year. He will be returning from deployment in April of next year. And in the interim, starting April of this year, I moved into this role, manager of government and public affairs. I have been with CN for 10 years. Again, started this position April 1st of this year. I'm based out of Memphis, Tennessee, but I've also had the opportunity of working out of our Homewood, Illinois office, a suburb of Chicago. Prior to coming to government and public affairs, I had the responsibility of sales and marketing, managing our top tier revenue generating customers throughout our network. The subject matter that I want to talk to you guys about this evening is in relation to the bridge replacement that will be coming forthcoming. I know that CBP has had some engagement with the town as they are currently working on a project to upgrade their inspection system and machine, and CN is supporting them in those efforts. Along that way, we are also in the preparation to repair and replace the bridge, the existing bridge. It is approaching its end of life for its age. The bridge, it's very important that you know that the bridge is currently still operable and safe. It's continuing to receive regular maintenance and inspections, but we are in the process of looking at options for replacement and repair, okay? Those options and plans are in the very infancy stages, so I don't have any maps or visuals or anything to share with you at this time because we're still working on that. The plans right now, CN always wants to plan for the future, so if we're going to endeavor down this road of the bridge replacement and repair, we are looking at the best options to carry it for the longevity as safely as possible for the future, okay? So some of the plans include things like a possible double track option. That's in discussion. Nothing has been finalized. Other things are that the repair itself could start, construction could start as early as mid next year, possibly, initial construction phase. The bridge completion right now is planned for 2024, so there's nothing major that will be happening in the next 12 months, okay, in your community. I'm hoping that within the next 12 months, myself and other CN representatives will be able to give you the details of what the repair process will look like, what the final bridge and rail infrastructure will look like. I will tell you that the work that CBP is doing to ensure safe inspection of all the cargo that crosses the border will allow for a quicker inspection. And when I say quicker inspection, currently the trains move, my understanding is about six miles per hour through your downtown corridor. After the completion of their new inspection machine, that will go up to about 12 miles per hour, double that speed. We hope that the outcome of that will have a shorter timeframe that trains will be in your downtown corridor is our goal there. So all that being said, we're looking at the best possible option that will be the safest option that will continue to have CN as a good neighbor to you in terms of our rail operations. We know that it's an important part of our organization to move the goods through your town of Rainier, but we also want to make sure that we understand your concerns related to our operation and those are heard. So I'm here today to first introduce myself, see it for myself, I had not had an opportunity before now to come, and make sure that you had a proper contact that would be the liaison as the process continues further down the road. I hope that I will be able to give you a more detailed update by the end of the year of what the plans may look like. Again, our engineering team and all of those specialists are working very diligently right now to come up with multiple options that will yield the best results for everyone involved.
Well, I guess open floor for anybody in the council, but a couple of things I don't know if you're aware of. First of all, you said six miles an hour going through town, that's very impossible, but it's not reality. The reality is, is if a train stops here, does a crew change right at the thing, at the old station? And because of that, then by the time they get moving again, they're probably under three miles an hour. And so unless they decide to move the crew changing station several miles, which the Border Patrol and Customs have agreed to inland, to move that station farther east, I don't, and they had permission from them to do that. If that crew changing don't do that, we're still going to have three mile an hour traffic.
Sure, understood.
Putting all this high speed, high speed radar in and everything else, when you're only going to go three miles an hour, it does not make a lot of sense, so we'd like to see that happen so that we can move these trains through this town as fast as possible. Also, I think you said 12 miles an hour. I don't know what the curve is here by the, basically by our skating rink, but I believe it's at eight or 10 miles an hour curve. So again, that also reduces the speed, people going through there. And so those are the major concerns because obviously three to 12 miles an hour.
It's a big difference.
Do the multiple, you know, four times. So obviously we are, and each train's are getting around it and causing a lot of inconvenience. And I don't know if you're aware of this, but we have sent a letter, both to our congressman and senator and to the CN, listing some of the concerns that this improvement or so-called improvement, who bridge, it would be an improvement, but obviously you're doing it because of the life of the bridge, but also increased traffic, increased speed. And our concerns are we want to shed our soul to this pain because this is the business for North America. And I think some of the concerns are, when you consider, you know, this is 120 years we got on this bridge, so I'm sure we'll probably anticipate with better design, better materials, probably another 100 years of the new bridge.
It would only help us.
We consider the small requests that we've made, and again, we have a list of those so that it can be built into your design, not at the last minute and say, if you would have told us, you know, two years ago, we could have done it. Well, you have been told two years ago, so take those into consideration and we can work with you, we can share the pain, and we can help you move these trains through faster, which includes it at all, it's all about making money for your company, and that's fine, we have no problem with that. You help our tax rolls, we can be good neighbors, you can be good neighbors, but we have some major concerns of our own in that seven hour express set. We can work with you.
Absolutely.
And we can do.
And I think that's all we can ask of each other, right? Is to listen to each other's point of view on this. I'll make sure when I return to my office that those concerns, and I believe they have been reviewed and received by the design team who's working on this project, but I'll reiterate that with them to be able to address, as you mentioned, the curve, if possible, and some of the other concerns that you may have. We want to be good neighbors, we really do, and I think talking to us directly as we are now and as you have been doing is the best method of doing that. We are also engaged with elected officials and try to update them on the progress that we're doing because again, this is the busiest border crossing, as you mentioned. We want to ensure that both the business of CN and of our customers are safe and sound, but also being good neighbors when we're doing that. So there is a balancing act there. Again, the great thing about all of this, Mayor, is that we are still in the design phase, nothing is done, so there's opportunity to listen and there's opportunity for us to take all of that in consideration.
Bringing that up with the elected officials, the city council of Fort Francis and Mayor Call, Mayor Call have contacted me along with some other people in Fort Francis, and they've contacted their MPs and whatever they have over there, their elected officials. And they brought to the attention, and we've talked on this and collaborated about including the pedestrian light bridge alongside the CN rail bridge, and basically we would think that would be a great asset to both communities. I don't see it being really inconvenient. Obviously, we've checked with the Customs and Border Patrols and our area manager, Tony Jackson, who had thought it was a great idea, so we had to, I don't know if it's a support, but we, in fact, there's no resistance anyway there, so I think that would be a great asset to the community. You know, I realize the white bridge is not, when you incorporate that in design, it's not going to be overwhelming additional costs to this, and I think it'd be a great, great asset to both communities, and I think it should be really good public relations for the CN. Any questions from the council?
I have one.
Sure. Hello. Hi, Rhett.
I have a senior under some train speed annoyance.
Yes.
CN supports quiet zone request, but will need to pursue normal processes with the surface transportation.
And I think.
Need no more quiet zone?
No, and I just realized I made an error there. It's actually FRA who you need to, so what that note is, is that I understood from Jackie McQuince and some of my colleagues that one of the requests from the town is that the quiet zone be expanded. There is currently a quiet zone, I understand, here at the downtown, right here where we are, but that the town was interested in expanding that radius for the quiet zone. CN supports, we are not against expanding the quiet zone. I want to make that clear, and that's why I put that in there. Sorry for the error, that should be the FRA, Federal Railroad Administration. What I'm, why I put that in the document is there, CN does not control the approval of that request. That request must go through the FRA, and I, along with my other colleagues, will do what we can by letters of support or helping you with information to navigate that request, okay? It has been discussed and recognized internally that that is something that the town would desire, and I just wanted to acknowledge that I was aware of that and that if you need, and I've done this for other towns and municipalities, is to send a letter of support to the FRA if needed.
Thank you.
I have one question to bring here, Stacy. As far as consideration for dismantling the Canton River Bridge that's currently present there, it's been a difficult part of our community. We're known for this bridge here, so if you tear it down, it kind of just, you know, it takes away from our town. So I want to see if it would be possible that they could just donate that bridge if they're going to tear it down to the city of Rainier, so we could maybe find a place to put it on display, because it has been part of this community for since it was built.
Okay.
108 years to do that, yes.
Okay, well, I would not be the person to make the final decision on that, obviously, okay? But I can understand how you can have an iconic piece of your identity, the town's identity, that you'd be interested in. What I will do is I will take that back to the design team and to the team that's managing the project to see, I don't know, I don't know what the plans are for the bridge, the dismantled bridge, so that's some work that I'll have to just follow up with you guys on once I go back to the team. I think it's an obvious idea, but again, I don't know what the plans might be, if I can help you.
In the design stage right now, you mentioned that it's possibly a two-track. If that is the case, then also the, I believe, the existing house rail extension that's there now would have to be moved, I'm assuming you put the tracks on the north side. So with that said, that will be moved, and that's where the changing house is now, basically crew changing house. So then again, once they decide, I think we'd like to know as soon as possible because that also changes, it would have a track or two tracks, it changes whether it would have that house here, that will change, whether you're going to have the crew changing here, changing there, so that decision, whether it's one track or two tracks, will be monumental as far as further complication for the design, and then we can understand what's going on and where that would be, and whether you move that and all the shift or.
Absolutely.
Build a new one and where it's going to be built and then get all that.
At this point, I feel that all things are on the table. Again, nothing's been decided.
Yeah.
I hope you guys like me because I think you'll see a lot of me in the future. This is going to be an ongoing discussion for sure, to your point, Mayor. There's, one thing leads to another, leads to another, so as those designs start to come together and as I'm able to share those with you, I will, and I will be as transparent as I possibly can, so you as a town can plan accordingly and under, more importantly, just understand what's happening, right? But I just, again, everything's on the table. We're looking at the safest, most efficient, community-friendly option that we can offer at this time, and those plans are open.
Well, I want to thank you on that, and obviously you do have a letter that we sent with some of our major concerns, but I do want to challenge the audience out here, if there's something that you think may be a major effect because of this and that, bring it to the council, we'll address with her and try to work through whatever problem or any maybe solutions or any rules, what they are, you know?
Sure.
So if you've got some ideas out there, or want to see something, now's the time because I know four years from now or three years from now, once these plans have been drawn up, it's really hard to get something changed, so.
Absolutely.
Think about it, you know, concerns and that, and I think you're willing to listen, whether you're willing to do something about it or what they can or can't do, we don't know, but we can present them to them and address them accordingly.
I have a quick question before we move on. The increase speed to 12 miles per hour, I'm just curious if that also means that they'll have additional rail cars because of the increased speed to scan? Would the trains just become longer just because, or can we truly expect less wait time for when the trains cross the track?
So the idea is less wait times. I know that the subject of train lengths comes up often, and we have seen longer trains, I'm not going to deny that. Right now, we have a sales and marketing team, I was part of that team, that are actively working to continue, you know, to grow our business. I cannot guarantee that a train now that you see today won't be slightly longer in the future, who knows? Some trains may be slightly shorter. But I can say that because of the improvements to the scanning machine, the way in which CBP has to inspect the trains, that process will be more efficient, therefore moving the trains through ideally faster. Only time will tell, but the last thing that we want to do here is to put, CBP to put in more efficient scanning for us to make improvements to the bridge and the track just for the same end result, right? That's not the goal here.
You're not, you're not, you're expanding all the sightings as they go south, and they're not reasoning, they're not doing that because the trains are getting shorter.
Oh, no, I mean, we have to.
And more frequent, so we understand that, that's why in your request, as you know, we have a pedestrian bridge and we have all those things, and we realize those are things that are really hard to stop because of the essential service cards you have, but you can share the pain and we can make this livable for us because we do live here.
Absolutely.
And we have to do this, and so I think we can work together and get some compromise on this, and then hopefully we'll do it. Any more questions for me? Do we want to take audience questions?
I just have one question. So we have a real blueprint up right here, and it looks on that blueprint like the railroad has 140 feet, between, you know, 70 feet on each side of the tracks, including the tracks, which seems semi impossible, but I'm just wondering if that's true.
I don't know if that's true. This is, I'm not the subject matter expert on the real estate part of it. I know that all, the railroad has right weight, and we have typically our right weight on average is about 50 feet, I believe, on each side of the track on average, okay? Not including the track, so from the end of the rail, out 50 feet on either side is average. Locations can vary depending on what was there before, if there was a parallel track there before that's now no longer there, et cetera, but I don't know. If that's something of concern, I can definitely try to get someone from our engineering and the real estate team to clarify.
Yeah, I asked that because of, I mean, it would seem to me that if it were 70 feet on this side and 70 feet on the other, then that's going to, for example, come into the alley that we in, okay? And if that were on the other side, of course, that takes care of the vehicle, but so, yeah, I'm curious.
Okay, I will, I have Cheryl and I are in good communication, so once I'm able to get that information and someone can definitively tell me that, I'll communicate it to Cheryl and communicate that to you, if that's okay.
Thank you.
May I ask you any other questions?
Sure, absolutely.
I'm your closest neighbor.
Okay.
And I'm the one right next to you. And my concern, I have a couple of concerns.
Okay.
Do you start to take over part of my property?
I don't, not that I'm aware, not that I'm aware of, okay, okay.
The other question is, we've got the x-ray one.
Yes.
Do we have a wall protect us? Because we already have all the satellites up above that are throwing off EMTs.
Sure.
X-ray is going to add extra EMT to that.
Now, CBP would be the best person to answer that because the new x-rays.
You can check on that because we don't need extra radiation.
So I will give Mr. Jackson, I believe, with CBP, he will be the best person to answer that question for you. Again, if it's okay if I communicate through Cheryl, that will communicate about the x-ray. That's their project that you know can be. All right. Safety first, that's a mantra, so I will, I can investigate and let you know what the plan is to ensure that you're protected from any kind of, no problem.
This is a question request, maybe shared by council and other constituents, and that is, I'm aware that they have a system where they can lubricate either the rails or the wheels, and there's little can be done about the low frequency problem, but the high frequency is like.
Yeah.
They use subtract oilers, but if they could design somehow to eliminate some of these little essence which force the wheels to slip, you know, that'd be a long-term benefit.
So I, as I was preparing to come and visit with you, I, again, I've been in this role since April, so I went to Jackie McQuince and some other individuals who are very familiar with the area and some of the concerns and some of the projects that have been going. And this was one of the things that she brought up to me, and when I say one of the things she brought up to me, this was one of the items we discussed because it was well-known that the high frequency swelling is a concern, it's very loud and very disruptive. My understanding, speaking with Jackie, and she and I can work on giving you a more definitive answer, is that it is something that is being worked on in conjunction with the improvement plans, but even before then. So it's not something that you have to wait until 2024 before you'll see an improvement. It's something that our engineering and track group realize and understand, and they're trying to mitigate, they're trying to find more of a permanent fix. They've done some oiling in the past, I think it was a minor temporary improvement, just to come back and have the same results sooner or later, so they're trying to work on a better, longer-term solution for you. So know that that's something that's been discussed and has been recognized, and I appreciate you bringing that up with us tonight ahead of the minutes, but we're still working on that.
Thanks.
No problem.
Again, this is exactly what I challenge you, the citizens of that, to do, and I think what the council will do is ask some of these questions, concerns are approached, we will have a point person on this that'll be talking directly to you.
I appreciate that.
Because obviously they want to relay their message and we'll relay it, and we may know some of the answers. Again, I think in that request, just for everybody's concern, we had asked for a wall put in there, which would eliminate a lot of that noise and stuff like that. So some of these things that we need to know about, and if we hear, we'll convey that on. Hopefully we can get it built into design, or you have an answer for us that we can relay back to our constituents. So with that, I'd like you to move on, and any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll check on your question.
I have a time to bring up, unusual hour, I'm kind of new to the area, want to be arrested, but there's a parking issue. There's so much that some people need raise their pebbles in the head and go, okay, they say they can't park on city streets overnight, all right, and or have the parks. This guy went away, but it was on my corner, so it wasn't on my corner, but my computer, and I just, I'm kind of feeling like, you know, kind of personally, but I have a solution to this problem, it's a no planer, all right? No parking in city parks from 10:00 to 11:00. No parking on city streets from 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. What else do you have? A verbal parking permit from the.
Excuse me, good talking with the CN here, now we'll address that, that's a different subject. Okay, moving on now, folks, we're going on with our regular meeting, and the first order, second order of business sent is to recommend approvals of the minutes of the July 20th council meeting. Second, we got a recommendation, second on favor.
Aye.
So carry. Thank you, folks, for coming.
Thank you.
Review the listed claims for July 2020, we've got a chance to look at them, any issues on any of the claims?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second on favor.
Aye.
On both, so carry. Review the accounts balances and disbursements ledgers, the lines, financial statements for the general water sewer funds. Motion to table those. Motion to table. I'll second. We have a motion and a second on favor.
Aye.
On both, so carry. An American Rescue Plan update, you have that in possession there, could get a chance to look at that, review it. We need to talk more on that yet to put any questions for anything. I mean, it's still so preliminary.
Could you clarify what that references?
Well, the American Rescue Plan is the relief, the COVID relief fund, and, you know, they, we don't, quite honestly, I don't know if anybody knows what it covers and what it doesn't cover. I know it's covered some things as far as restaurants. I know it's covered some things as far as restaurants, hotels, certain things like that. And we really don't know where we're at. We're checking on that all the time just to see what our liquor store and everything is qualified for, things like that. So. The next is the recipient of the KCDA grant, the sound system. I want to thank the Kuchkong Economic Development Grant here for this. I think it sounds good here. So it's really easy to use. It was about a $2,400, $2,500 grant that paid for this. So it sure makes a lot of difference. So I want to thank them for that. Also, the receipt of the Marshall Canutson Grant for the Big Vic rehabilitation. We also want to thank the Marshall Canutson Grant for that. Also, a little known thing here, also in the KCDA meeting that I attended, there was a grant also given to the Kuchkong Historical Society to make a kiosk. I think we talked about that, about the whole story of Big Vic and everything else. That's under works in the works and that will be placed. And they said they'd be talking to Nick with, you know, with the placement and that. So I don't know the quite exact frame on it. Anyway, they received the grant. So we will be receiving a kiosk to tell the story of Big Vic, one of our own, I guess. So I think that's very good. Anyway, recommend approval of renovation 2021 seven regards for Francis International Bridge. If you're familiar with that, basically what they'd like to see is government control of the international bridge instead of privatization. Carers can be controlled and repairs and everything else and safety concerns and everything else. I think that's almost a necessity. There's only a couple of private bridges that cross the Canadian border here in the United States. And, you know, these are major repairs. And, you know, as you can see, traffic this the last few days that continues. So I think we should recommend approval of that and send a letter off asking, you know, supporting resolution of government control of that, of the international bridge.
I'll recommend approval of resolution 2021 dash four seven in regards to Fort Francis International Ball International Bridge.
Second. We have a recommendation, second all favor. I oppose. So Kerry. Jen, liquor store statement. I know you've just been busting it one day.
Why not? We had a great month.
We had a good one.
Yeah.
Best year ever had, right?
I believe so, yeah.
Anyway, we had just an excellent, I think she's ever had, either caused it or whatever. What's up?
I think, you know, it was just everyone was excited to get out this year. And I do think the border closure has helped. I falls en near immensely. This is the closest you can get north and it paid off, I guess, to have them be able to come here. And we were happy to have them. Our barbecue cookoff, which I told you about last month, was our biggest one yet. So, I mean, I think that brought in like $7300 or $7400 that night. So I've already got people asking if I'll do it again before the end of summer. I mean, they had a lot of fun. But right now, I'm just trying to focus on Rainier Days this weekend. There's a lot of planning I still got to do, so.
What do you, besides Rainier, is there anything coming in August?
Well, there potentially another barbecue cookoff if I can find the time.
Are you going to Canada for your upcoming?
I've got somebody coming to town today who's going to check a couple of places for me. But tentatively, we're going to aim for September 11th for the pig roast. So that's if we can find a hog. Apparently, there's a shortage on those this year. So. I thought about that, too. Pork butter, belly or something. We'll figure out something.
For the audience information, Rainier Liquor last month, net profit was $18,435, which is real huge. Year-to-date profit was $44,268, which is about $20,000 higher than post-COVID in 2019. We've got three statements here, COVID statement of last year, 19 and 21. So, you know, $20,000 higher. So I guess it's inflation.
Yeah, okay.
Whatever. Any questions for Jen? Again, I guess, what are the, who's reading here when you're saying for Rainier Days? What is anything specific planned? I'm sorry if you went over.
I guess I didn't. Just for the muni itself or in general for the town?
Well, whatever you got to do with it.
Well, we're having another cornhole tournament on Friday at 5:00. And then we're going to have Jeff go on afterwards. He's going to have a foam party. So now usually.
Is that Friday?
Yes.
That's 13th and 14th. Why do you have an electric bike parade?
Are you leading?
Or golf cart? Maybe both. Yeah. It's mostly like electrical.
Pancake breakfast fundraiser, 7:00 to 10:30 on Saturday. That's fundraiser for the record, pancake breakfast.
Oh, what? A fundraiser for the record?
Yeah, pancake breakfast on Saturday, 7:00 to 10:30.
Is that right here?
Yeah. It will be here in the hall.
And then I think following that, there's a bike parade. The kids get to decorate their bikes right out here for the bike parade. And then is there anything between that and the parade?
The bike station will go from 7:00 till noon. So when people bring their kids and breakfast, they can turn their bikes and we'll have all the vehicles there, old fashioned cars, cold cans and something that can drive their bikes. Our ball fans are working around there. That goes on there.
Well, it's fun. There are a lot of things going on. It's good. I know loonies are having some festivities. I don't know of anybody else going on, but it sounds fun. Any other questions for Jen? Keep it up.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. All right, Nick. What you got going on, Nick?
Kind of the same thing, getting ready for Rainier Days and fixing some holes in the road, doing some hot mix blacktopping with the county, mowing. Mostly getting ready for Rainier Days right now.
That machine you got for gravel in alleys, for example, Sheriff. Our alleys, Jameson, are smoother than asphalt. Our asphalt. You got to turn it on, too. It's on. Yeah, the alleys are actually smoother than asphalt roads. It's a tankless addition.
I got a grader from the county. They're pull behind one, you pull behind the pickup.
Yep.
Works very, very well for the narrow alleys over there.
They let you use it or just?
Yeah, they let us use it for the summer because they only use it for one month in the spring.
Great. And the county's been, you know, good, the city Rainier, I mean, I think we always have some things, but they, I think they go with the pay for us. And we certainly appreciate all the cooperation you have with them, so. There's another thing that I'd like to bring up here, and that is the Bobcat. Yes. The days they're looking at it and the tracks on that Bobcat are really getting cracked bad. And we need to. Okay, yeah. Take a second. We can get a price on it. How many hours on it? You should get at least $1,000 hours on it.
It was 260 hours over the moving warranty.
260 hours over the warranty. How many hours on that?
It was 1250.
Okay. Well, you, we don't get 1,000 hours over once ours, but ours get a lot more abuse and that.
Yep.
So, yeah, you are getting to the end of.
I think the, I think the last report I got from the mid G, iron height was like around 5,200 bucks. I was servicing it, putting the new idle bearings in there and the new tracks.
So, I mean, that's, you should be getting, usually what happens on them, usually you're on a lot of blacktop servicing. And that's where you'll get some wear on the surface of the tracks. Usually what happens is that there's rock holes and everything there on that first. I mean, just after yesterday, the other day, I just thought it'd be good to try to get that going before winter comes because if it breaks down in the winter. Yeah. We definitely, we move all security braces on some of them.
And I know they make leftover refurbished ones, too.
You know, we're just buying and wearing all. It is like going to sell things.
Yep.
Meaning buy new. You know, the best life is the first one, so.
Yep.
Refurbished.
We also repaired that chunk of road in front of Bogman House's place.
Oh, you got that?
Yep.
Okay.
We got that hump taken out of the road down there.
Good. Yeah, I don't know what else, you know, there's continual maintenance around here. But I got to tell you, Nick, you're doing a great job. I've watched you and asked and expect, I watch what you're doing, you take initiative. I think the city's glad we got you. Appreciate the effort you put in and doing this stuff, so. Thank you much. Any other questions for me?
I have a quick question just in regards to Rainier Days. Are we going to have extra light trash receptacles placed strategically?
Yep. Yeah, we got lots of them ready. They'll be out Friday morning early. Texter picking tables. We got stuff open at Starred and Brown Friday morning early. We'll be buzzing Friday.
One thing I did want to mention again, and I think some of the near future, the Historical Society will be contacting you, I think, for help with that kiosk up by Big Vic. So I know what the, you know, the Canutson Grant and $4,500 to refurbish it. And I'm sure that Rainier's some kind of subcontractor, dress it up or something, so.
I think Bruce is repainting it. Yeah.
Okay.
So we can help anything needs.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Nick? Oh, thank you.
Thanks.
Just an LCCMR update. The governor approved a project 2020-056, giving almost $762,000 for Rainier Safe Harbor Transit Dock in Rainy Lake. We did, didn't find, I guess, find, we got it a year ago, we got all delayed because of COVID and everything. But we must have got notification and it showed up right, Cheryl?
Yes.
And did we actually get the check in the mail then or?
No, no, we haven't completed all the process yet. The rest to be, we're going to bring it in sign and once that, that grant or that is executed, then we can give that as a stage to engineer.
Okay. Next, for the zoning committee action, we had a variance request by the due equipment and it was not recommended by the land use planning commission. Who do you want another, build another building or what?
Yeah, he wanted to build another building. He was not within the setback limits for the building. And it was suggested that he move the new building up farther to make it even with the building that is already there. And so he just needs to come back to us with a new plan.
So the, so the request was denied to let him build a post to our.
Correct. Yes, correct.
All right.
And then the second one that we had was.
You didn't even have a motion on that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Then a motion to bring it to the city council next week for the final not approved.
Recommendation.
Recommendation.
Whatever. We're going to demand a variance.
So the recommendation of the zoning committee is not to approve the BDU request for variance.
Correct.
So at the council meeting next week, we will act on that then?
I'll make a motion.
We can make a motion right now?
Can be recommended.
Or a recommendation of. Make a recommendation that we do not approve this now. That is correct. And then he has to go back to them with a new plan and bring it in. I'll recommend a recommendation. We have a recommendation in a second all favor. I oppose. So Kerry. The next conditional use request was by Thomas Kellner for, for what?
For a cup.
For what?
A cup conditional use application.
And what is that?
It's for, Mr. Kellner has recently purchased the rest of the property on the other side of UTE 118 behind the Loons Nest. And so the conditional use permit that he has for the current storage unit does not apply to that side of the road. So he has to come in and get a new conditional use permit to cover the property located on the opposite side of the road.
And that was approved or a recommendation that that gets approved?
The recommendation was yes.
Okay. We have a recommendation of the zoning committee to approve Tom Kellner's request for land use. I'll make that motion. I'll second you. We have a recommendation, second all favor. I oppose. So Kerry. Next order of business, Karina Joyce, little issue. Karina? Yes.
So, I'm Karina Joyce. I own Rainy Lake Grill. We have noticed in the last couple of weeks that we have had a rat issue on our side of the tracks. I'm not here to point fingers because I think that there's a number of reasons that we have this rat issue. But between me and my family, we've caught seven rats in the last week and a half. My neighbors, Mary Ann and Wayne, have caught three. My neighbor Paul Jones has caught four. I have had, last week I had three different tables. Thankfully, they had eaten and we explained that we were having an issue with possibly a derelict property, possibly grains not being kept by distilleries and breweries. I don't know. But in the five years that I've lived here, I have not seen rats in our area. I'm sure that they come on the trains, but they are building a home here in Rainier. And one of the issues is Chris and Charles Halloway's property is vacant. Rats will move into vacant properties because there are not people there. It's been severely overgrown with brush, which also harbors rats. So I'm basically in the, the process of deciding whether, if we can come together as a community, I think we can, and deal with this rat issue together. Otherwise, I mean, I'm looking at pulling out all the gardens that I've installed at Rainy Lake Grill, all of the places that can hide rodent activity like this. Or we work as a community to help Chris and Charles realize that this property that they own needs to be cleaned up, along with some other derelict properties in town. I'm not impressed with Chad the Duke's property in town that sits empty. These are all families that have financial means that can clean these properties up. And I've spoke with Chris and Charles two years ago when my dog chased a rat out of her property. And that was the first time that I'd seen the issue. Now the rats are coming right around. I've had three different tables that left because they saw rats in my yard at Rainy Lake Grill. So the seven that I've caught is just in the last week and a half is just the icing on the cake. So until we all get together on this issue and get the property cleaned up, get our whole downtown area cleaned up, everybody needs to be setting traps. Everybody needs to work together so that we're not all baiting with the same bait. We have a problem because October is looming. And when October comes around, it's just like every single person in this room, they know that mice want to move into their homes. They know that rats want to move into their homes. And if we don't deal with this issue now, before the weather turns, we're going to have a major problem in Rainier. And I have done extensive deep cleaning in the restaurant that I know that I have not had rodents in the restaurant. But it is a matter of time until this is an issue for every single person that lives in this vicinity. So I know Chris and Charles have had things on their plates, but one of, one of the things is I think their property is one of the main issues as to why the rats have a place to live. There is nobody there to chase them out. There is so much stuff stacked in the homes that it, it has created a home for them with no activity. And they are telling us that they've only caught mice there. I, I guess I'll believe them. I'm not sure that I do. But the rats are coming from somewhere and I have never seen this activity in the five years that I've lived in Rainier. And in the last three weeks, two to three weeks, we have seen many, many rats, customer complaints, and we've caught 14. And in the last three weeks, two to three weeks, we have seen many, many rats, customer complaints, and we've caught fourteen. So this is a city problem for all of us. I don't know if it's grain that now Canilever uses, I don't know if it's grain that Looney's uses that is giving them food. Uh, and maybe it's a combination of the fact that there's a derelict property that nobody is living in that is giving them a safe harbor. But this is a, a problem for all of us. And I've invested nearly four hundred thousand dollars in five years of my life under Rainy Lake Grill. And all I'm waiting for is for a Facebook post to go out and ruin my business that we have rats in Rainier. So I'm coming here today to ask the community and the council as a whole to address this issue. I have reached out to the Department of Health in Minnesota. I've reached out to my own inspector. I've reached out to the lodging inspector for our area of Minnesota. They said that they cannot initiate anything until the city initiates all of the protocol to ask the health inspectors to come in and deal with this issue. Because the health department cannot inspect a property that is privately owned. They can only be involved if, in this issue, if the city gets our building inspector to go out there, look for signs of vermin and that there is an infestation, and then the health department can get involved. So until the city takes the initiative to deal with it all, and I know that you've sent two letters to the property owners. I know that you've sent multiple blight letters to other people in this town. But we need to do this as a council, as a city, to get on this right away because we are two months away from our weather turning, and this is gonna be a big problem for everybody. They're gonna burrow under our buildings, they're gonna be living underneath our homes, and we cannot have this. So that's what I got to say about that.
All right. Clearly, this is a serious issue. Obviously, you hear stories, rumors, accusations and everything else. So I took it upon myself to ask Nick to go around and check out Hellboy's property to see if that abandoned property or what was a big issue. With that, he filed us a report of what he's seen in pictures. And the council passed that and reviewed that and what Nick actually seen so that eliminates any rumors or invidos or anything else. I didn't realize you caught fourteen rats.
Well, seven myself, but with my neighbor.
Fourteen that been trapped, very significant. We have received a letter from Hellboy saying they've hired a professional exterminator. I don't know whether Tico labs or anything else. I'll let them talk about that. But clearly, uh, we can take action under state statute one forty-five K, which considers a garbage house. That's what they call, that's what the clear act is, and it gives us authority to act. We will be asking the Hellboy's for a timetable for their compliance because without dates, they're just dreams. We will be asking a building inspector to help wait to go. We'll be asked to accompany him to inspect that building. And that's, we're gonna get as soon as possible. I'm gonna try to contact Kelly Myers. I've tried today. But we'll obviously have to give a warrant to go inside. And any other buildings that we may think needs the examination. And then we'll deliver the findings on to Hellboy's, where they'll be aware and he'll write it for a report. And then obviously, we'll want a timetable on those findings, whatever they might be, so we can feel a lot of compliance. Like you said, and I understand that two-month issue because every, my hunting cabin, no matter how good it is.
Every year.
Come October, they just tight looped in. And so I can see that is coming. So obviously, we'll be asking for this compliance under findings, whatever the findings will, will gather. And with that said, I don't think that is our clear plan of action here. I believe the Hellboy's want to address this. They have sent the letters. They've contacted a professional exterminator. But that's the plans that the city plans to follow.
I just ask that as a community, we work swiftly on this because...
That's not throwing all the blame on them.
No, I'm not throwing all the blame on them. I think it's a number of reasons that we have it, so.
And all the findings, and the report.
It's everybody, including myself, to make sure that we are running clean practices, that we are not leaving things out, that garbage is disposed of properly, that we don't have holes in our dumpsters. I mean, there's a number of reasons things could be happening. And so I think as a community, I'm here to just ask everybody to work on this quick and diligently and to help the people that need the help and do this together.
With that said, I think everybody heard my, how the city is approaching it, what authority we have on this. I do think I'd like to talk to the Hellboy's on this. You do have a, I, thank you for the letter you sent us. But we also need a timetable whenever people go to show up and things like that, plan of action. And then I would like to, I think, once I make contact with the building inspector, he can contact Chris or Charles or whoever has again to make that inspection. But it will be as soon as possible so we can get on this situation as soon as possible.
Thank you.
With that said, I don't, I don't know if we have to say anymore.
No, I don't think so either. Just as long as we're all on the same page.
Chris, Charles, do you want to say anything? Okay, well, you, you understand what we're doing here, so. And hopefully, we can get this cleared out. Thank you. Moving on then, let's see where we have. Sorry, I just lost my, my agenda here. I gotta shuffle papers around. Oh, the next one is Sheriff Wal, Wal, noise, more, noise ordinances. Sheriff, what do you got?
Thank you. If it's okay, I'm just gonna go ahead and please everybody in on this same table. This is the same big time we look at. I got these from Sheriff Perrin. I have mine here. Here, just. And I'm sure you guys already have these, but I just keep them ahead and put them together. And like I said, I expect that this will be tabled. I'm going to be working on my new home out there for the winter. Um, this one won't be back until September, so I'm kinda hoping maybe I can get it on the agenda for that time.
Is that my turn?
I'm not sure, is this on?
You can't hear yet.
Just take a, hold on, I can't in the mic and see if that is a...
How's that?
That's better.
Okay. Um, first of all, I would like to apologize for any offense I might have given the city council last time I was here. Sometimes I get frustrated with things and I don't exactly express myself the way I should. But what this, what's happened is since I moved here, and you all know this, and you backed me from the day I got here, I opened a dog grooming business and a boarding business, and this is my livelihood, okay? I have barking dogs at times, that happens. But I do everything I can to keep the control down. I just recently took in two dogs and I'm training them. But from day one, the very first day I got here, Phil Williams has called the sheriff on my property on a regular basis in the last nine days. The sheriff, he has called the sheriff seven out of those days. And Sheriff Perrin looked at the bylaws and told me that I have the same... Minnesota statute says you can have noise from, I think it's seven o'clock in the morning until ten o'clock at night. My dogs are always in the house by eight o'clock PM. I have, and I have basically, because of COVID, given up my boarding business. Giving up, I'm turning my grooming business over to my daughter because of health issues. And Phil Williams has completely harassed me. And the sheriff said, I have every right to have my dogs outside and because the city council, I have a conditional use permit. I have three dog businesses. There's going to be noise. And the ordinance says that the only time that that comes into effect is if it's harming more than one person. I live next to the railroad. I live next to the man, and he's told me I am on the same wavelength as a city building who has loud parties sometimes, the muni who has functions and they get loud, Rainier Days. There's always, you know, the weekends. I know where I live. I live around noise and I deal with it. But this person has harassed me to the point where I am afraid to let my dogs out. I have put up extra signage. I have put up higher fences. I'm doing everything I can. I put, I took in an abused dog and it almost killed me to put a shock collar on him. And I don't have to shock him. I just have to give him noise now. But he was abused horribly and I am, if you've noticed over the last two or three days, those dogs are under control and I'm doing the very best I can. But what happens when they come back next summer and I open my boarding business back to full capacity and I got one person? And the only time he ever comes after me is when he's drunk and he calls the sheriff. And Sheriff Perrin said he's tired of it. And unless the city council wants to change my zoning, which will put me out of business, there's, he's not going to do one thing about it. Because I am well within my rights to run my business. And so I'm coming to you guys. I'd ask that you just kind of look this through, understand my situation and understand the type of business I run. And understand, you know, I live in a cul-de-sac where people go from the muni and, you know, I mean, they're drinking and I find bottles all over my property. And they're coming around my house and my dogs are barking at two o'clock in the morning because they're in front of my house, making noise. But my dogs are in the house. They're not out barking. And if this, this harassment continues, it's, it's, I, I don't know what I can do to make a living. I've had this, this ordinance was passed in two thousand sixteen. I came here in two thousand twelve. Everybody knew what my business was. So I'm just asking you, I, I can't be back until September because I'm, like I said, I'm working on a, a winter home. And I'm gonna have a caretaker at my place. But some, you know, the, basically the sheriff is telling me that you guys have got to let him know about the harassment. He has to, I have to have numerous people who this is affecting. And it's not affecting anyone. I live across from Sue and John Bruggerman. I live across from Mark Lassard. His dog barks. Dogs come to the park in front of my house, they bark. Who knows whose dogs are barking? And I have got to have protection from the city council from this, or I can't run my business. And like I said, I'm sorry for any offense. I'm coming to you humbly. But this, this, this has gotta stop. So I'm hoping that you'll table this and in September I will get ahold of you again. And maybe you'll have a chance to look this over. But I did go through Sheriff Perrin, Perrin about the bylaws. And I am protected like every other business on this side of the railroad. If quiet times are supposed to be at ten PM, then that affects everybody on this side of the tracks, not just me. And I never expect that there, that's gonna happen, okay? I want business to continue. It's good for me. I don't have a problem with what goes on around me. I know where I live. But I shouldn't be treated different than other people either, you know? And my, and like I said, I'm working on two, two ten-month-old puppies, all right?
All right, we, I think we've adjusted this. Question for, are there problems, close neighbors, any? Do you see there's a big noise issue with the dogs?
No, not at all. Not at all. We don't.
That's fine. That's all I need.
It's Joyce issue with the dog.
That's all I, that's all I need.
And I don't even hear their dog.
Obviously, Phil might have better ears. I can understand that.
Well, but Phil lives closest to the muni. He's been doing this since the day I moved down.
That's good.
And he lives right, you know, he lives closest to the bars.
And I don't know what to say about him. And this, uh, we did have a complaint form, part of Phil's orders, asking that your conditional use permit be removed because of the dog or...
And if that happened, then that would also affect everybody else.
I don't even know how to handle that. Was that called for zoning then, or is that called just the council?
I don't think, I don't think barking dogs would constitute the removal of a conditional use permit anyways.
Especially if it's just from seven to ten. And my dogs are in by eight PM. They're let out once in the morning and they have to come back in.
I understand we got a barking dog. It's Rainier, the veteran request, but, uh, I've got ten dogs in my yard and I don't even want a dog out.
And, and, and the sheriff comes. And, and here's the thing, the sheriff's deputy came the other day and Phil Williams went after him when he was drunk.
Yeah, that's much. At this point, thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
Any other? Would you be able to inform anything, Sharon?
Thank you. I appreciate your time. And again, I apologize for before.
Anything else, Seth?
Thank you.
Got a motion to adjourn?
What's that?
In a second, all in favor?
Aye.
So carried.